Welcome to Tuesday, April 27th, 2021 regular meeting. We're a bit of a skeleton crew tonight. Thank you for coming. Let's stand for the pledge. Allegiance to the flag, United States of America, to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, liberty and justice for all. Matt, can you review the fire exits, please?
Yes, exits are in the back of the LGA.
We have a moment of silence for Rose Olivieri Nicholson Phillips, who had worked as a teacher, a teacher's aide at South Avenue Sergeant and Rambout Schools, and for David W. Toffey, who retired in 2009 after 39 years as a special education teacher for the Beacon City School District. Stand for a moment of silence, please. Thank you. Before we go into public comment, I wanted to, we have some students here to talk about their experience recently with BOSI's and their sustainability work there. So can I have a motion to move the student and school presentations to item 2.01 and change open to the public to 2.02?
So moved.
Alyssa, do you have a second?
Second.
Greg, are there comments or questions about this? All in favor?
Aye.
You know what, Kelly, we didn't do attendance. Did I miss that?
Yeah, we didn't.
Oh, I'll finish this vote and then we can do attendance. We didn't do attendance. So I'll finish the vote and we'll do attendance. So all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? I'm in favor, passes five to zero. Sorry, Kelly, do you want to do the roll call? I totally missed it. Excused.
Here.
Excused. Excused. Delayed.
Here.
Here. Here. Sorry about that. Okay. Ms. Soto, would you like to introduce our students?
Meeting members of the Board of Education, Dr. Landau and his executive team, thank you for the opportunity to share our students' experiences who attended a conference called Navigating the Summit. The summit brought together students, educators, community members, activists around critical issues surrounding sustainability and climate change. The participants had the opportunity to learn, share their successes, and to network with others in the county. It was a BOSI's-run conference. So in the conference, our high school students gained exposure to topics within environmental science such as water quality, sustainable engineering, invasive species, and wilderness survival. The goal of the conference was to spark passion for environmental stewardship and foster leaders in sustainability and environmental science. This evening, we have two students who are here to talk about their experiences. And then we also have several students who are remote. I'll shout out their names. They'll just holler if they're present. We have Caitlin Bertie Alice. Is she here? We have Hope Cleveringa. Marilyn Gany. We have Inessa Joseph here with us this evening. We have Alexandra Maroche. Kenneth Rosa. Emma Sanderson, she's also here with us. Demetra Stella. And Brielle Travis. I see some of their names on the board. Maybe they're just a little reserved and they'll chime in when it's time for them to speak. But without further ado, we have our two stellar students to discuss their experiences.
So at the first panel that we went to, it was a panelist students talking about their experiences and how they wanted to improve their community. So there was one girl who started up a composting system at her school. And then there was another girl who organized a group of students to protest at their local county legislative to help put forth some environmental changes.
At the summit, it mainly consisted of adults and teachers and administrators from different school districts who were talking about what they did in their school to create a more sustainable future. It did include the panel that Emma attended too. And it made me wonder that maybe we can do something small, like starting a compost at the high school or something. And I know at Glenham, when I was there, we had a small composting garden where kids in their free time, they can go and they can help out. And it was really fun and it brought everyone together. So I feel like maybe as a summer project, we could start something like that. And yeah, we could just, kids who want to come and help, they can come and help. And yeah, so that's what sparked my...
So our idea to get these things moving would be to start a garden club or an environmental club. So there would be teachers and students involved. But we need more interest in the schools so that we can maintain a composting system at the school within the garden club or even start a garden that the garden club would also maintain.
Thank you, everyone. And we look forward to their projects, their ideas coming to fruition in the near future. Thank you again.
That's so great. Alyssa, just to, because I know there's an environmental club at the middle school, but there is none currently at the high school.
Unfortunately, we can have the club running this year, but we do have someone who's very interested in starting this coming September.
That's great. That's really exciting. And was this a one-day program or?
They actually attended, it was a two-day conference. And I think they're working on having another conference soon. Maybe Mr. Wright can share some information on that.
Yes, thank you. Just to go along with that, Ms. Soto and I had a conversation today with Clarkson University Beacon Institute. And what we are looking at is just ways to include them into the sustainability project. So I actually reached out to Duchess BOSI's today just to see how we could start that partnership with them working with Duchess BOSI's, but then also working with the school, with Beacon High School on their sustainability project. So more to come about that in upcoming meetings.
That's great. It sounds like there is definitely plenty of interest if that many students from Beacon High attended.
Yes.
And I'm sure the green teens maybe could...
Absolutely.
Give some knowledge. I think they have plenty of composts going on over at the garden at the rec center.
Yes, absolutely, yes. Working with the grant team would be, I'm glad you mentioned that. That would be something that could be really helpful. But thank you.
Great, thank you so much. Thank you for coming to the meeting tonight. Appreciate it.
We just, BOSI's is trying to do more of these student-engaged kind of events this year. They have one, Eric, you're near the microphone. They have one, I think, on May 12th. It's like a leadership summit for students again. And this one is focused around equity issues.
Yes.
And there's like a keynote speaker and there'll be sessions for the students. So just want to say a big thank you to Duchess BOSI's for, they're trying to bring students together, especially at the high school level, across the county around certain issues. And these are, these events have been free to component districts. So I really want to applaud BOSI's in trying to bring our students together across the county. It's been, I think it's been really a great experience for our students. And thank you for coming to a board meeting. And I very appreciate it. So thanks for being here.
And just to piggyback off of that, Ms. Soto has already identified teachers and students. We have approximately 10 students that will be going to that summit. So looking forward, yes.
Can't wait to hear from them. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Okay, so let's move on to public comment. Is there anyone who would like to make a public comment? I don't see anyone in the audience. Is there anyone on Zoom?
Hi, my name's Demetra Stella. I'm with Brielle Travis. Both of us attended the summit with Duchess BOSI's. And we went to both days of the summit. And we also were thinking of ways to incorporate Beacon with the Duchess BOSI's program. Their ideas, greatest, just to grow interest and make sure that we have the support that we think we need from both teachers and students in the district. Scary's Brielle.
That's great. Thank you so much for reporting, reporting back. Is there anyone else that would like to make a comment? Okay, thank you. Next, we have our workshop. Tonight, we have Eric Wright, who's going to speak about our summer programming.
Good evening once again. Just over the past few weeks, I've been working with our principals, all of our administration to actually try to put together Beacon Summer Academy to combat learning loss, but then also to provide support for our students socio-emotionally. And in addition, just to provide enrichment activities for our students. I want to thank our administrators that have taken part, especially our principals, in helping me to put some of this together. It's been, we've sat down many hours just brainstorming on ways to really put together something that can be meaningful for so many students throughout the district. So thank you to our team. Next. Got it, okay. So we're thinking of a six-week program, K-12, four days a week, Monday through Thursday. And we thought Monday through Thursday because we want to make sure that our students have time to have three-day weekends throughout the course of the summer and spend time with family, as well as some of our teaching staff that'll be involved in the program. We were thinking three to four hours a day, that will be enough to get through not only the core, but then also some of the enrichment activities. So the focus, the focus of the program will be to look at the instructional support, credit recovery at our high school level and just learning loss that may have taken place throughout this pandemic. Social-emotional support. We have to look at what a lot of, we have to look at the fact that our students have suffered dearly throughout the course of this pandemic. And we need to make sure that we are putting these supports in place so that not only they have someone to actually talk to, but they have sort of like a therapy, a therapeutic situation where they are able to just align, such as art activities, dance, et cetera. So we thought that this would be ways to really help our students feel acclimated as they prepare for their 21, 22 school year. So grades K to 2. We thought long went hard, what would be the best way for elementary as a whole. And we figured to, as opposed to one long six-week program, maybe to have three separate cohorts of two-week implementations. So there'll be three two-week sessions that take place. We want to be able to maximize the number of students that attend the program. So therefore, we're looking at having different students participate in each two-week interval. The dates would be July 12th through the 23rd. We figured right after the 4th of July, you want to give time for families who have gone away to get back, to come back home. And then also to give our educators the opportunity to just have downtime as well and then also prepare for the summer academy. July 26th through August 6th would be the second session. And then August 9th through the 20th would be the third session. So ELA and math will be the focus of the core. And we're looking at a lot of project-based learning opportunities. We thought it may not be best to just have traditional ELA and math work taking place during that time because it'd be more of what students have done throughout the course of the year. So we figured we'd find ways to make it fun. So what that means is having weekly themes. We haven't laid out the themes as of yet. We want the teachers to play a part in that once they are selected. But we thought that would be the best way to really ensure that students are engaged throughout the course of the summer. Second, clubs. Over the years, we found that one way to really get students to be motivated to come to a summer program is to add those enrichment activities. So some of the clubs we're thinking about is arts and crafts. One of the thoughts that came from the high school principal, Ms. Soto, was that maybe we could work with, we can have maybe our art department work with students at the high school level so that they can work with our elementary students. Therefore, it's a way for them to get back and be involved in a program at the elementary level. I think it makes a lot of sense because you never know. In doing so, you may have students who find their passion and decide that they want to go into a program where they can actually teach in the future. So we want to involve our high school students as much as possible in that process. And then the teachers, the art department, would oversee the students who are working with our elementary babies. Science. I had a conversation with Asha Pak from the Beacon Institute. And he was happy to hear that we're trying to run this summer academy. And he's willing to do whatever is possible to be involved in the program. So we thought, they have a component of their program called the River of Words, which actually allows for students to take part in science, writing, art, and bird workshops. And I thought this would be really good for our students so that, once again, they're not just involved in just the core activities. Some of the workshops they have are, in terms of poetry, they have a program called the Dream Out Loud program where 3rd through 6th graders, well, I'll start with K-2 first. Where the K-2 through 2 students, they begin to study elements of nature. And then they do fun activities and then write poems based on what they've seen on maybe their nature walks. In grades 3 through 8, they have a letters to nature where they actually write similar, but they write letters to their classmates, emphasizing introspective and advocacy of writing. For some of our 5th through 6th graders, they have, or 5th through 8th graders, they have a six-word memo where it's a story, writing a story in six words. Very interesting. If our students can pull it off, which I know they can, they'll be well on their way to having the ability to write memoirs in a succinct fashion. So these are all fun-type activities that I think that our students would really love. They also have students go down to the river and get a water sample. And then they write about that water sample as well. In terms of phys ed, I have worked with, working with Mr. Giametta on putting some activities together for our K-2 students just to ensure that there's activity taking place. One of the things that Mr. Giametta has been focused on for this summer is ensuring that our kids get lots of physical activity. Over the course of the pandemic, there are a lot of students that may have been stuck in the house. So we want to ensure that we are giving them opportunities for motion throughout the course of the summer.
Are the clubs included in that three to four-hour period? Or are they in addition to that time?
Yeah, so, good question. What I was thinking is that it may be best to include in the three to four hours because there may be additional opportunity for students who are not part of the core component of the program to actually come in to take part in the camp, part of the activities, the enrichment activities. And they may be able to do it during the time that the students that are part of the core are doing it. Or they may be able to take part after those students that are in the core. Now, grades 3 through 5, it would be very similar. The only difference is that we want to look at adding instrumental program for our 4th and 5th graders. And that's just to prepare them, especially our 4th graders who will be taking band for the first time before many of the 5th graders who take part. It will be just additional training and fun time for those students, for that population of students. So at Rambout, in all of the programs, all of the levels, it will be a six-week program. It just may, the way it may work, may be structured, is just different. For Rambout, in talking with Mr. Soltis, he thought a four to six-week program would be beneficial. Where, number one, one of the focuses would be on a transition program for incoming sixth-grade students. Just to really get them understanding the inner workings of a middle school. And I thought that would be very beneficial for the incoming students. Their focus would be on the core. But additionally, they would have opportunity to take part in clubs as well. The recovery program would focus on learning loss that may have happened throughout the pandemic. We want to make sure that we're able to meet that population of the students' needs as well. Like I said, it'd be a four to six-week program. As of right now, he has math and ELA teachers that are ready to go. We're looking at seeing how we can incorporate science as well. The thought was for science, it would be experiment-based for the students over the summer so that way it can be activity-based and keep students engaged throughout the course of the summer. Some of the clubs would be the same in terms of arts and craft and science. But then additionally, there would be, for phys ed, when I spoke to Mr. Giametta, he's already working to determine for secondary phys ed teachers how to incorporate activities such as volleyball, soccer, weight training, flag football, lacrosse, tennis. And he has a few more, but that's the core right now, the program that he was thinking of having. And of course, for some of those programs, it can be, it could trickle down to our elementary students as well. So I think that would be something that our kids would really appreciate. Now, just to talk, what I did fail to mention for both Rambout and for the elementary schools is I'm working with a couple of companies right now to just incorporate some additional activities over the summer. One company is, one organization is VidCode. That is a coding, it's a program that offers coding, a coding program. And they have it based on the level of the students. So they have an elementary level, a middle school, and a high school. I'm looking to have a presentation done tomorrow for some administrators, for Mr. Keely and some teachers. And so therefore, they can get a look at the program. Just to let you know, they are contracted with every Rambousses. So we'll get A back on it. So it seems like something that if it's something that we want to do moving forward, it could be a win-win. I thought for the high school, it's something that they can build into their computer science pathway additionally. And then for middle school, it would be some of the scripts that could be helpful for students to prepare them as they go into the high school. Additionally, there is a science K-2 program that I had the elementary coordinators and elementary principals see last week. A demonstration was done last Wednesday. The program is called PhD Science. As we're in the process of looking for a science program for our K-2 teachers, for our K-2 students, I figured maybe we take a look at this program. And if it's something that works, they have a pilot right now where they're offering their curriculum free. We just would have to purchase the actual materials for the program. So there's some interest right now. I will be by the people who attended the meeting last week. I'm in the process of putting out a survey so that they can put their thoughts on paper and get it to me. And then from there, we'll see if it's something that we want to do. For the two programs, if it's something that's a goal, we're going to look at incorporating it into the clubs for the summer. Similar for Rambout, Beacon Institute, with the River of Words program, they have programs that are given for middle school students as well, as well as high school students. Just to let you know, they have a team survival camp over the summer, which is part of their ecology center, their water ecology center. And then they also have their Horizon Steam Camp as well, which is something that our students have participated in over the past few summers. One last piece, Mr. Soltis was adamant about was possibly having trips throughout the summer just to ensure that maybe they tie into the curriculum that takes place during the summer. So at the high school, a transition program for incoming ninth-grade students, that's something that Ms. Soto has been pushing for a few years. So she's extremely excited that that will be coming to fruition this summer. She also wants a two-week boot camp for students that will be going into the AP, the AP program. And the reason being is that she wants to try open enrollment this upcoming year. So she wants to ensure that there's supports in place for students that want to go into the AP program. Of course, there will be a credit recovery program for our students that need to make up work throughout the course of the summer. We definitely want to make sure we have that taking place as well. An SAT prep course she wants to ensure happens. We have start in August, August through September for seniors, October through December for juniors to ensure that we are preparing them for the SAT. Some of the camps and clubs the high school is thinking about. A dance camp. You know, many forms of dance. We want to ensure that we're making sure that our students are active over the summer. And we thought that also this could be something that trickles down to our elementary students as well. Some of the students at the high school can lead a dance camp for our elementary students also. Drama. Beacon Players Director Children's Theater. You know, I think what has been touching throughout this for me is the fact that you have teachers and administration at the high school working together, as well as students. And they are coming up with these ideas just to try to get back to our elementary students. So if this is something that we can accommodate, I think it can be a win-win because they can end up filtering into our Beacon Players in years to come. And it can start at an early age. because they can end up filtering into our our Beacon Players in years to come, you know, and it can start at an early level. A guitar camp, uh Susan Wright is interested in really uh, you know, getting the guitar program that much more off the ground, you know. It started about a year ago, but she's looking to really, from more interest. Jazz band with a week-long uh focus on improv. You know, over the years, you know, we've been looking to to really, you know, jazz up our our jazz, our jazz band, you know, really get it started and 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 really ensure that, you know, it's not just a club, but it's actually the actual band that that really takes off here in Beacon. Um a marching band to prepare for homecoming. You know, homecoming is, has become very big under Mr. Giametta, and the more we can support his program as he's been supporting you know, athletes, you know, in our community, I think that can go over well. And then our music, our musical production. So how Beacon Institute comes into all of this at our high school level. Through a program that has started over, uh that started this year in Beacon called the Impetus Program. And forgive me, I can't remember uh what the acronym stands for at this moment, uh but we have a class that's involved in this program, is part of the step program. Um they have a camp over the summer. It's a roller coaster camp where students will uh build roller coasters, you know, um through math and science. And as a result, what will happen is uh at some point during the program, pandemic willing, um they will go to Six Flags. So I think that's a way to really get kids engaged and want to be part of the program, we know that they have a trip to Six Flags. And so the thinking, you know, the thinking at the high school level, um Mrs. Soto, Asher and I had a conversation today. I thought is, in order to build that STEM program, is to start with the students for the twenty-one, twenty-two school year that will be part of the STEM program. If they take part in the summer program, um this roller coaster camp, then uh, you know, they they'll be much more excited about being part of the STEM program. So she's going to try to recruit based off of that. Um hopefully, the roller coaster camp can take place over the summer, and we may have a lot of students in our STEM program uh for the fall as a result of it. And then they also have an echo, an echo leaders program taking place this summer. I believe this is the first year of this program. You know, which is gonna focus on environmental science, you know, sustainability, et cetera. And this is the program that I'm looking to try to uh really partner with Duchess Bowses and uh and bring Beacon Institute and Duchess Bowses together as well. So that concludes the presentation. Are there any questions for me?
On the um open enrollment for AP classes, what what does that look like?
Um what what it means honestly is just, you know, one of the things uh Dr. Landau, Mrs. Soto, myself talked about, you know, over the past few years is just giving more op, more students the opportunity to take part in the AP, AP program here at school, so what we were going to do is to try to not go by such a strict requirement, you know, prerequisite to enter the program. And so um if we open it up that way, what will happen is most, we may find out there are more students that want to be part of the program. So we'll give them that opportunity to try to get in the program and find ways to help them be successful in the program. As opposed to using those stringent requirements to exclude them from the program.
So would that kind of eliminate the current model where you have to have a certain GPA for consecutive marking periods in the middle school in order to?
Yes.
That's great.
Yes.
Super, thank you.
You're welcome.
Um do you have some questions? Um I have a few questions. Um so all of this is paid for through the American Rescue Plan, is that correct or is it?
Yes.
And will there be lunch served or any meal served with the programs?
Ironically, um I just put out an email to Mrs. Pugano um this week, you know, the, whoa, what's today? Tuesday, yeah, this week, just to try to see if um, how can we include? How can, um I mean, if it's possible to have like a full meals program, you know, take place. Um and if not, you know, then I'll try to build around around that to ensure that, you know, kids won't be, you know, too hungry throughout the course of the day. You know, at least try to see if we can have a breakfast or something, snacks, something included in the program if not full meals.
That's great. Um and for the um younger ages where there's three different sessions, can a student participate in more than one session or is it one per?
I think one of the things that um we have to do first, and there's a possibility, you know, that 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 could happen. But we are in the process now in our next meeting, we're gonna build out the criteria, you know, for the program. So we need to see how many students we need to identify a target, you know, for the program, and then from there, we can see, you know, if it's a possibility, and we may be able to open up a couple of slots, you know, for some um students to return, you know, to a second or third cohort.
Okay, great. Yeah, that was my next question, actually, is how are you measuring learning loss? How are you encouraging families to participate?
We're gonna look at um the data that we have. Um so there are data from the different assessments, you know, that that uh have been taking place throughout the course of the year, and we're really, and as we talked about just today, um um for the month of May, um there is the next set of 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 benchmarks that will be administered, so we can use that, you know, as well. And it's both at uh, it's at both elementary and the middle school. You know, the high school, a lot of it is based off of of off of credit recovery, so that will determine.
Um is there gonna be transportation provided?
Um most likely yes, for those that need it, yes.
Um are there, are special ed students included in this, or is there extra stuff for special ed students?
So, good question. That was uh, that was one of the things that came today from the PPS department, and what, and so it's it's twofold. One is the ES, ESY program for uh a certain population of our students with disabilities. And then um for anyone that's not included in the ESY program, uh yes, they could be included in in the program as well, so. Uh we are looking at having AIDS, NTAs, teaching assistance as part of the program as well, so we'll be prepared for that.
Well, this is really ambitious. I mean, it sounds great, and I love, I love how, you know, you're kind of thinking about the fall and how some of this will unfold into fall programming and um, you know, some of it's even like a little sales pitch for various clubs and further participation that way, and I love the open enrollment support for AP courses, because it's one thing to just say, you know, anybody can apply, but, or anyone can take that course, but if we're not helping kids to know that they can thrive there, then that there's, those are only, only words.
If there's a challenge with this, it's gonna be staffing, so, you know, we're starting to work on that uh this week as well. You know, hopefully, we don't have to scale back too much. Um however, if there's a summer where educators need to definitely get a little time off, it's this summer after the year we've had, so. Uh but but the way Eric has broken it up, I think it allows um our teachers to not have to do the entire six weeks, like they can do parts of it, which I think could attract a lot of our teachers to to working in the program, so we're excited. And uh, and it is pretty ambitious, but you know, I I think one of our goals is we want to show what we can do with this extra funding. And uh, and it's really exciting, and I think it's a chance for kids to get more time, you know, in school and also doing some of these cool activities that they're starting to plan, so it's it's really exciting.
Yes. So, and and just to add to that, you know, two things to add to that, um you know, we 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 talked about it just today, you know, we really focused on it today that we want to give teachers the opportunity to decide if they want to work six weeks or on two-week intervals, especially at the at the elementary grades, right? You know, that's why we have that, the three sessions. Um additionally, what we're looking at is um um we're looking at ways to just ensure that not only is is, is as I said earlier, that that we're focused on that learning loss, but just ways that we can really uh provide enrichment activities as well. So for instance, we have teachers that um we're gonna put out a survey to teachers and families within the next week or so. Um for teachers, what we're looking at is just to see what skills, what 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 passions do they have outside of just the classroom, you know, and skills that they have that match it, and um give them the opportunities to possibly um work with some of our students, you know, and and let that be a club that takes place throughout the summer, you know, so we want to make sure that it's those opportunities as well, because we want our students to choose which activities they want to be a part of, you know, so as we planned it out, all all these these clubs that we talked about may not be av- available each session, each two-week session, but they will be available at some point, and, you know, families may say, you know, some of our our students may say, hey, well, I'd rather go this two-week session because this is what's gonna be offered, so we want them to have that opportunity. So, um so we still have, we we definitely do have a lot more planning to do, but we're looking to have something out in the very, very near future.
That's great, and it, yeah, it's sort of complicated offerings. Will there be a section on our website that explains it a little bit or?
Yes, I think we can do that.
I also really love the um high school students working with the elementary students. I hope, I hope that's a tradition that continues beyond the summer.
Yes.
Are there any other questions or comments for Eric? Thank you so much, Eric.
You're welcome.
And I have a motion to adjourn to executive session to review the employment history of particular individuals and to seek legal advice from the school attorney for the purpose of discussing collective bargaining with the Beacon Association of Office Personnel. Seconded by Alyssa. Comments or questions? All in favor? Aye. Opposed? Favor passes six zero. Board should return in about um half hour. Thank you. Um reviewing the agenda, there is one correction, which is item eleven point one two, election staff, there are additions to the staff list. Um are there any parent groups on Zoom that would like to make a comment? Okay, seeing none. Thank you. Matt, do you want to give your super tense report?
Yes, uh I will be quick tonight. Uh just wanted to share that the uh calendar, the academic calendar for next year is up for adoption tonight, and uh it's it's pretty similar to calendars in the years past, and uh obviously, our hope and our goal is that next year, at least in, you know, some regards, is returned to normal. Uh but I do want to say, we're we're really excited, uh that next year in our school calendar, we do have the holiday of Juneteenth. Um June nineteenth is on a Sunday next year, so it's a Monday off of school, and it's just a change, a really significant one, and uh we're excited to have that in next year's calendar, and uh and then the other thing for for the remainder of this year that we're gonna be embarking on in a few weeks is we're working with Duchess Bowses to conduct uh what we're calling a social emotional audit of the district, and so that will be focused on students. Um and uh we're gonna be conducting uh interviews of students, obviously with uh parent consent, and also um some student-like focus groups and things to develop uh, sort of capture a moment in time in terms of the social emotional needs of students in our district as we prepare for the summer planning that Eric talked about, and also prepare for the return to school next year, so the community will be hearing more about that um as we get closer to launching that in a couple of weeks. And then lastly, uh Anne Marie and I are gonna work on uh doing uh a Zoom uh town hall or two about the budget. That will be open to, you know, the the entire community. Uh we have a slightly new uh Zoom feature now. We have the webinar feature, so we'll be able to do questions and answers a little bit. Or we'll be able to get questions a lot easier. Instead of trying to monitor the chat, they'll come in through the Q and A button. Uh I cannot guarantee that I'm always able to answer everything that comes our way, but we want to do a few Zoom town halls just to get kind of in detail with the budget uh this year, and we'll obviously, you know, try to spread news about that pretty widely, and then we'll post it on the website as well as for people to watch at any point. It'll be on our YouTube channel as well, so in the next couple of days, we'll have those scheduled, and we're excited to do that, because I haven't done a Zoom in like a month. Uh or, you know, that kind of Zoom, so uh, and so we're excited to uh to be doing it. And Eric, I think um once the summer, once the summer uh thing shapes up, once we know what staff that we have, I think it's crying out for a Zoom town hall as well about the summer offerings. Except I won't be there, you'll do it, and uh, but anyway, we found that this, the Zoom town halls is a great way to answer people's questions in the moment and also sort of poster posterity. But that is all I have tonight, and uh but we're excited to be moving forward with these things. Oh, one last thing. Um and we mentioned at the beginning of the meeting, but it's worth mentioning again, uh thanks to the students who came tonight uh to talk about their experience with the Duchess uh Conference on Sustainability and Climate Change. And uh we do have a number of students from the high school attending on May twelfth, uh the Leadership Around Equity Issues event. And just again, want to applaud Duchess Bowses for hosting these free events for our students this year. It's been a very powerful way to get students together across the county, but thank you.
Thank you. Any questions for Matt? Okay, committee reports, including board comments. Anthony?
Sure, so the curriculum committee meeting met uh last Wednesday. There were two groups. The first was a secondary group. The secondary group was uh discussing the platforms as well as technology, uh textbook resources that could be utilized and that they would like to look at. Several teachers wanted to access the platform to review, so they were asking to review on the New York Learns platform as lo, as well as the Atlas platform. And the names were given to the two companies, so they're gonna be uh trialing those platforms for the curriculum writing piece. Um the elementary um group had a presentation by PhD Science, which is a science curriculum that is going to the new New York State uh new next generation learning standards. And so they're gonna be, need to be implemented in the twenty-three, twenty-four school year, so there's a work going on with that. Um we're looking into a second offering of a foreign language at Rhombout. I know that Italian has been discussed for that. Um we discussed the curriculum materials needed, I already said that. And uh coordinators created an uh a meeting where they could articulate um what the needs are for the departments. Eric, did I miss anything? And I'd just like to point out that with the nice weather and the spring sports starting, it is so nice to see the students so active after school and the and the facilities being utilized. Um I've made it a point to uh drop my daughter off at the high school every morning, and once it returned to four days, it's just so lively, and the kids look happy to be back. Um and and it's just really nice to see that there's somewhat uh some normalcy going.
second of three people who have, uh, offered their professional advice and services volunteers to the district. We have one more to go, and, uh, hopefully at the next meeting when we set a date for that, we can wrap that project up. We did review our usual tour of, uh, issues, including, uh, the, uh, claims reports, uh, and we also paid some attention to the, uh, Controller's Report. The Controller of the State of New York did something interesting this time around. Usually they just look at dollars and cents. Instead, they looked at, uh, websites and what kind of financial information about the district are you presenting on your website? So we reviewed that. We have, uh, a formal response to be, uh, crafted, as I understand it. Uh, and I'm not sure exactly what the timing is, but that'll be up in the future.
Do we have a date for the next Audit Committee meeting?
What's that?
Do we have a date for the next Audit Committee?
No, we need to talk and figure one because I have a couple of conflicts on, uh, coming ones.
Okay, so are you gonna send out an email to the committee?
Yep.
About that, okay. Thank you. John?
I forgot nothing today, thank you.
Thank you. Jasmine?
No, I don't have anything.
Thanks. Alyssa?
Uh, we have our next policy meeting on Monday night at seven o'clock. Tonight, we are reviewing or approving and adopting two policies, purchasing and professional learning and staff development. And I'll echo Anthony's comment about it's so great to see the kids back in sports outside, and everybody seems happy, happy, and it's awesome. And that's all I have. Thanks.
Thank you. Um, and my only comment is, you know, it's great to hear it from students that are participating in, in Boses' work, um, especially tonight as we vote on the Boses' budget. So, moving on to the Boses' budget and candidate vote, um, we'll do the vote for the, um, the budget first. So, all in favor of the Duchess Boses Administrative Budget for twenty twenty-one and twenty twenty-two? I don't know if we, do we need to?
You made a motion.
Is there a second for that motion?
Second.
Greg? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Passes six to zero. Now, um, for the candidates, it's a little bit different. I am going to ask for nominees. We can send up to three votes, um, for candidates. We don't have to send three. We cannot send more than one from each district, so there are two candidates from the same district from Wappingers. Are there any nominees for, um, for Boses' Board of Education?
I would like to nominate Richard Keller Coffee, uh, Keller Coffee, Edward McCormick, and Robin, uh, Robert Ruben.
I would like to nominate Karen Smith.
Richard Keller Coffee, Robin, Ed McCormick, and Karen Smith. Okay, so, um, can I have a vote for Richard Keller Coffee? All in favor of Richard Keller, Keller Coffee?
I'm sorry, how many, how many seats are?
There are three open, so we only have, um, we don't have the district conflict here because we only have, um, nominations from, we don't have two nominations from the same district. So basically, three out of these four, we could send as votes too. So in your voting now, keep that in mind. And if we don't get five, at least five votes for a candidate, we can't send it forward because we have to send, we have to, it has to be a majority of the board, and the majority of the board is five people, even though we're only six here tonight. Okay? Does that make sense? Are there questions? Because it is a little confusing.
So what did, what did you just, uh, ask us to do?
So there are four nominees, so I'd like you to think about, um, of the four, who, who you would like to vote for, and I will ask how many votes are for each nominee.
So does each member of this board get, what, three votes? Is that the idea, or what? How do you figure this?
Well, I talked to our legal counsel today, and it was a little bit unclear, but I think that that would be a good way to go. And then if, after that, we don't have a, a clear three, we can do a tiebreaker vote if we need to, or we can only send.
Why not just, uh, do a paper ballot and write down the names of three of us on each, and you have the clerk tally them up?
Um, sorry?
Say, how about we each write, uh, a piece of paper, the names of three that we would like to pick, and have the clerk tally them up and see if we, uh, have a winner?
That's not pretty transparent to the public.
Right, it's not supposed to be a confidential vote.
What?
It's not supposed to be a confidential.
Oh, it's not? We don't get to do that?
Unfortunately, we do not.
All right.
So, um, is everyone comfortable with that? And you don't, you know, we don't have to send even three candidates if you're not comfortable with your knowledge about them, um, you don't have to vote for them. They did all send a letter, um, talking about their qualifications and their interest in the role, so hopefully everyone had a chance to read that. So, um, who would like to put their vote in for Richard Keller Coffee?
I would.
I would also.
I will as well.
Alyssa? Anybody else? Okay, so there are three votes for Richard Keller Coffee. Um, who would like to put their votes in for Rob Ruben?
Skip that Edward McCormick.
I'm sorry?
Are you going in order, or are you just?
I'm going in the order that I wrote it down.
Oh, okay. I saw on the sheet, that's why I was just saying skip Edward, but.
Oh, no. So I was asking about Rob Ruben.
I, I did.
One for Rob Ruben. Anyone else voting for Rob Ruben?
Uh, I will.
I will too.
Three for Rob Ruben. Okay. Um, Ed McCormick?
I would.
I will.
Anyone else for Ed McCormick?
We're only voting, we, we have three.
You can vote for up to three.
Okay. Thank you.
Um, and so only two votes for Ed McCormick?
I did.
You did, and Anthony did, I think. Did, did anyone else vote for Ed McCormick? And any, um, how many votes for Karen Smith?
Me.
Sorry, I put that.
Karen Smith?
I do.
I do also.
You do, you do, you do. Alyssa did, did you?
Yes, yes.
I am also. Craig, are you?
Yes, that's a yes for Karen.
Okay, so that's five votes for Karen Smith. So according to this, we would only be sending one candidate vote forward, which would be Karen Smith.
I'm sorry, I didn't quite hear.
According to this, we would only be sending one vote, um, forward for a candidate, which would be for Karen Smith, because she's the only person that got the majority vote.
Which was, uh, Ed McCormick. Who was the one person?
Karen.
Karen.
Yeah.
I'm still having a little difficulty hearing.
Sorry about that.
Yeah.
Is everyone clear on that? Okay, did everyone?
So this, we decided that we're only sending one candidate?
Well, that's, that's the only candidate that got a majority of the board's votes.
But we can do a runoff?
It's amazing, it, it just bothers my mind how we're always talking about diversity and making sure that everyone has an equity chance, and Ed McCormick has been on the board serving as president, and he's a, a minority, and we're not sending him forward. I just think that we need to sometimes act instead of just speak.
I think maybe what we're trying to do is, uh, a little decision-making among a couple of potential candidates, but it's not my intention to only send one. We've got three votes, I'd like to send three votes.
Well, we have, I mean, we can talk about it a little bit more and do, and vote again. I mean, I'm, I'm fine with that. We can talk about the candidates themselves, we can, you know, that's fine with me. I, I put my, you know, do you wanna talk about who you voted for and why? Should we?
I'm just a little concerned with the process. There was a motion to appoint, there was no second, and it was just asked for other nominations, right? So then we made the nominations, there was no second.
No, I never made a, a motion to appoint, actually, I asked for nominations.
The motion for the nominations, and then there was no second for any nomination, so like, I don't know if we should just?
Start over.
Couldn't we vote, like, make a nomination, get a second for a nomination, and then vote on each one? So it's official, and then if there's one, there's one, if there's two, there's two, if there's three, there's three?
Yeah, I mean, we can, I, I don't know that the outcome would be any different unless we talk a little bit about the candidates. So maybe we should spend a minute talking about the candidates, or talking about how, you know, who we're comfortable voting for and why?
Yeah, I'm, I'm, uh, quite comfortable voting for, uh, the people that I did vote for. Uh, the other ones, I don't know much about, I don't have a strong impression about. Uh, but, uh, you know, I, I tend to vote for people that I happen to know or know of, and in this case, I'm well acquainted with Mr. McCormick. I do know Mr. Ruben, and I do know Mrs. Smith, so I think they're all good people for the board. The other ones, uh, I'm not as acquainted with.
Um, do you wanna tell us what you know about those candidates? What, what is?
Is there any reason why we can't, uh, bring other n, names up and see if we have five votes in favor of forwarding them?
Sure, I mean, I can, I can go through the names again.
I mean, I think it's, people are gonna vote for people that they know, or if their letter touched them in a certain way, or is gonna be an advocacy for that piece.
Yeah.
Right? So I, I'm anticipating that everyone, and hopeful that everyone read the letters and are, are making an informed decision. Um, Edward McCormick has been a longstanding board member. He, he brings a minority voice, uh, voice to the, uh, to the Duchess Boses, uh, Board of Ed. Rob Ruben is a local guy, he could, he could advocate for the southern, uh, part of Duchess County and the component districts on the southern part. Um, Richard Keller Coffee is a similar district to ours, they know what a small district feels like, and they need similar services as to what we need. Um, so that was my rationale for the three nominations that I made.
Yeah. Yeah, I've gotten to speak, uh, see Richard Keller Coffee speak a couple times. I think he, he's really dedicated to his work and, um, brings great experience. I know Karen Smith through her campaign for state senator, um, and I think, you know, I think she'd bring an interesting eye to the Boses' work that I think is going in a really great direction, by the way. Are there, does anyone have any questions about the candidates, or, um, is there, you know, do you wanna talk about your hesitation, or? It, it is a difficult thing, you know, we didn't, we did get to meet Karen in person, um, some of us have, have worked with Ed in different ways. Um, you know, Boses is a really important part of our district, it, it supports our students a lot. John, you actually have personal experience with Boses, I think, right? Did you participate in Boses when you were at Beacon High?
What was that last part? She was asking John if he participated in Boses when you were at Beacon High School.
Um, yes, I went two years.
Yeah, and I just feel like it is a really, um, it, it's a really great thing that we can offer, you know, it's this idea of shared services, and I feel like they're, they've been doing a lot, um, you know, they're doing their own capital project right now, they're, they are increasing offerings for our students, so it is a really important part of what we offer our students. Um, their board is just like our board, they need to talk about the, you know, the work that's, that's happening there, it's the same responsibility, so.
I personally would like to see a female voice on the board, which was why I voted for Karen. Um, I'm not that familiar with the other candidates, but if I can change my vote, it's, this is Ed McCormick has been president for a long time, and I'm sure that he is, uh, effective in his role, so it'd be good to see him stay, um, taking Anthony's comments into account.
Well, is there, is there anyone that would like to change their votes that they have already put in?
Can we add a vote?
Yes, you can.
Um, I still am here, and I'm herself very confident, and, um, Richard Keller, I like the, part of the Peace Corps, I feel like that helps with big groups, different personalities, know how to deal with people.
So you'd like to add a vote for Richard Keller Coffee? Okay. Would anyone else like to change their votes or add a vote?
Wouldn't we change your vote? Take somebody out and put somebody in?
Add, well, it.
We can only vote for three, right?
You can, um, I mean, honestly, we can only send three candidates forward. If you end up voting for four in order to vote for a candidate, that, the only, Richard Keller Coffee has four votes, so if he got one more vote, um, we would be sending him forward as well.
How many does McCormick have?
McCormick only has, um, three votes.
Who did you vote for, Meredith?
Uh, I voted for Karen Smith and Richard Keller Coffee. Um, and I, I hear your comments about Ed. I'm perfectly willing to put in a vote for Ed, so then we were at, we're at four votes for Ed.
I'll add a vote for Ed.
Okay.
But can I retain the votes I had for the other three?
If you add a vote for Ed and no one else wants to change their votes, at that point, we would be sending in a vote for Richard Keller Coffee, Ed McCormick, and Karen Smith.
Well, Alyssa, you could vote for four.
Yeah, that's what I'm hoping to do. So add a vote for me, for Mr. McCormick.
Okay, I'm doing that. And so at that point, we would be, um, sending votes in for Richard Keller Coffee, Ed McCormick, and Karen Smith. Okay, so I'm gonna have, make a motion, just to be clear, a motion to, um, send our votes in for Richard Keller Coffee, Ed McCormick, and Karen Smith. Can I have a second for that motion?
Can you do them individually, Maris?
Sure. May I have a motion to vote for Richard Keller Coffee as candidate for Boses Board of Education?
Don't move it.
Second. Second by Alyssa. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? So that passes six to zero. May I have a motion to, um, use, or give Ed McCormick a vote for Boses Board of Education?
Don't move it.
Anthony White? Can I have a second?
Second.
Craig? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Passes six to zero. May I have a motion to add Karen Smith as a candidate for Boses Board of Education?
Don't move it.
Alyssa, second by Craig?
I'll say it.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
I'm also in favor. Uh, opposed?
Aye.
Passes five to one. Okay, thank you.
There was another nomination.
Oh, I'm sorry. Um, may I have a motion to add Rob Ruben as a candidate for, uh, Boses Board of Education?
Don't move it.
Anthony White, second.
Uh, I have a question. So we've already approved three, and three is all we get to send? Is that right?
That is correct. So if this- So if this gets more than, if this gets five votes, then we basically are going to have a runoff. Is there a second for that motion? Okay, there is no second, so the motion. Moving on to the Consent Agenda. The use of the Consent Agenda permits the Board of Education to make more effective use of its time by adopting a single motion to cover those relatively routine matters which are included. Any member of the board who wishes to discuss individually a particular piece of business on the Consent Agenda may so indicate that that item will be considered and voted on separately, thus preserving the right of all board members to be heard on any issue. Are there any items that any board members would like to remove from the Consent Agenda to vote separately on?
11.06E8.
I'm sorry, 11.06?
E8.
E8. Anything else? Can I have a motion to approve, sorry, 11.01 through 11.14, less 11.06E8? Or do, I'm sorry, you said E, E8? I just wanted to make sure. Yeah, E8.
Don't move.
Anthony, second?
Second.
Alyssa? Comments or questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? I'm in favor. Passes six to zero. May I have a motion to approve 11 point, sorry, what is this?
06.
06E8, sorry. Did you, did you motion it?
I have abstained.
Can I have a motion to approve 11.06E8?
Don't move.
Alyssa? Can I have a second? Are you going to second that motion for me?
Sure.
Craig? Comments or questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Passes five to zero.
I'm abstaining, yes.
Correct. I'm in favor. Okay. Can I have a motion to adjourn? Oh wait, we don't need a second, exact. Can I have a motion to adjourn the meeting?
Move adjourn.
Craig, second? Alyssa? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Passes six, zero. Thank you very much. Have a good night, everyone.